Good evening, welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, October 3rd, 2016. At this time, if everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Steven Boy Scout here with us this evening, who's going to lead us in the pledge.
When you first face the American flag, Scott salute, or please place your right hand over your heart. I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steven. Steven, what brings you down here tonight? Come on up to the mic.
I am a life scout at 3:30. I am here to actually get a few requirements, sign up for the communications. Remember that. So, one of the requirements is to be there this time council meeting and to listen to any hearings that come out and take notes on these arguments that come up and like write a little paragraph on each side of it and present them at the council. So, I'm working on Eagle Scout currently, and I'm almost there.
Great, give them a big round of applause, guys. Mr. Cobb, I see we don't have Chief White this evening. Would you like to do the honors?
Yes, sir, I will. Well, if you would like to pray with us, you're welcome to join us. Father God, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for this community that we call home. Thank you for our council, Lord, and their willingness to serve. Thank you for all that are here tonight and showing what a great community we have. We ask that you be with us, Lord. We ask that you bless us. We ask you continue to bless this community with the great things that you have given. We ask that you bless this council, Lord, give them wisdom as they deliberate the items on the agenda. And finally, Lord, we ask that you be with us as we return home, and that in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. As I mentioned earlier, it's the city council meeting, regular meeting, October 3rd, is a little bit after 6:30. It's about 6:35. We have a few items on the agenda ceremonial to begin with. So, our first item on the agenda is new officer introductions. So, Chief Chudnow, let me turn this over to you.
Evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Sir Matthew Brown-Gell, and I'm going to bring him to the microphone so he can tell you a little bit about himself.
Great, welcome, Matt.
Good evening. My name is Matt Brown-Gell. I actually am Eagle Scout, so it's awesome to see you here.
Good for you.
Originally from Sarasota, I've been up in central Florida for about nine years. I'm married, I have a daughter, two-year-old, name is Annabelle. Previously, I worked for Nestle. We delivered ice cream and pizza. He's very excited to be here, following footsteps of my father-in-law, fortunately.
Well, great, I was going to ask how you go from Nestle to this, but we're thankful you did, and we want to welcome you to our community.
Thank you.
And, of course, we want you to stay out there, stay safe as you keep us safe. So, everybody give Matt a round of applause. So, how long you been with us officially?
Two months.
Two months, so what is that, ten months left on probation?
Almost there.
They cut you loose yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Now, what is that, about three months, six months, something like that?
About four months.
About four months, all righty. Well, as we said, welcome, be safe.
Thank you.
Anything, council members?
Good luck to you.
Councilwoman?
Good luck, yep.
All righty, thank you so much, man. Good luck to you. Thank you, Chief. All righty, now we have a plethora of championship teams here from Oviedo. So, council, why don't you join me down in front, and we'll get some introductions going, and we'll recognize these exceptional youth that we have here in our community. Drew just informed me that we have a lot of parents here this evening. So, we have a lot out in the lobby, we have a lot of parents inside, so we're going to kind of try to rotate everybody in and out of the council chambers. So, is everybody in here, the first team up is going to be the soccer team, Florida Crays Crush. Is everybody in here a part of that? Is there anybody outside from soccer who didn't make it inside? Drew? This is what happens when you have seven teams to recognize in the small council chambers. All righty, well, the first one, as I mentioned, is Florida Crays Crush. The U-16, U-16 team finished third at Nationals in Frisco, Texas. There were 10,000 teams in this age group from across the country, and these folks finished third. So, let me introduce their head coach, Hugh Menzies. Hugh, where are you? Come on in. Great job, Hugh. No way. Give it all to Councilman Britton, he likes all that stuff. Great job. Now, you have to leave that ball here, you can't take it home. Hugh, why don't you introduce your team?
Sure.
And then, when they come in, I just have to go off to the side, then we'll bring everybody forward.
Okay. My counterpart, Tim Geltz. Our Golden Glove goalkeeper, Dylan Pixton, she won the Golden Glove. Emma Marcus. Tyra Doyle. Megan Mosley. Regan Massey. Sidney Brown. Meg Parrott. Zepay. Caitlin Zepay. Taylor Cusk. Grace Hagerty. I appreciate you inviting us here, and, again, you know, we've worked hard to get to where we are. Some of these kids are going to be juniors this year, there's some of them who are already committed to colleges, so, for real good schools, so...
Mr. A.
Alabama, over there, there's a Bama girl over there.
Here comes the Bama girl.
And there's a UCF girl.
There's all the Gators out there.
I really appreciate you inviting us here and acknowledging the girls for their great accomplishments. All right, thank you.
It's all about you and about these American ladies. Wait, do you want to just come on and stand up? Picture? Great job.
We've got seats up front here as well, if somebody needs them. All righty, parents, as we said, we'll kind of rotate a little bit, so next team up is We've got a few seats up front.
We have a lot of chairs.
And we'll rotate them all around. There's some seats against the wall to the right. All righty, looks like we have everybody in now, so we're going to move on to the Oviedo Little League 11-U baseball team. going to be Oviedo Little League. So, anybody who's out in the hallway for Little League, come on in. These guys won district, they won state, they came third in the regionals, and their Congratulations, everybody. Parents must be proud too, right? manager is Moose Jacobs. Moose, come on up. Good job. Moose. And grandparents. Now, Moose, I just have to ask, that's more of a football name. All those hours out on the hot soccer field paid off.
Yeah, it's actually Maurice Jacobs.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Moose, why don't you introduce your team, tell us a little bit about their accomplishments?
First off, I want to thank Sean Napier, assistant coach. My other assistant coach is Justin De Soto. First up that I have is Thomas Alfonso, he is our catcher. Next is Ben Davis, he's our first baseman, an outfielder, and a pitcher. Next up is Brady Napier, he's a pitcher, catcher, shortstop, outfielder, all of the Next up is Austin Jacobs, this is my son, he plays shortstop and pitcher. Next up is Grant Seaman, he's an outfielder and a big hitter for us. Next up is Daniel Mayhew, plays outfield, catches a little for us, came up with some big hits this year. This guy's as tall as I am. Garrett Baumann, hey, he's a pitcher and an outfielder. Next up is Justin De Soto. A.D. De Soto, sorry, we call him A.D. Austin, he's our second baseman. He bunts very well, he's a good bonner. Nicholas Roman, he's our centerfielder. Come on, man, he got a smile. There you go. Patrick Akins, he's our right fielder, sometimes our infielder. Lucas Vertulo, he's our first baseman, pitcher. Hang on a second, he came up a while back, a year ago, he was on All-Star team, he got bit by a shark, and didn't think he was going to even make it out with a leg or anything, and he has battled back and came and did All-Stars again, man, he was great. He's a good job. Next up is Andrew Villar, he's our outfielder, come up with some good hits during districts and sectionals. This guy here, I know he's as tall as I am, Brent Soderholmes, he's our third baseman, likes to hit some balls. These kids worked very hard the whole time that I had them in All-Stars. I've had most of them since they were six and seven, and we've tried to keep them all together, that way we can make a run. We've got one more year to make a run for the Little League World Series, which Oviedo has never done in the Little League side. Babe Ruth's done it a couple times, but, you know, we want to give it a good shot. They work hard, and just, they're great, good kids, parents are great, and, guys, I want to thank y'all for recognizing us and having us out here, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Two ways taller ones, shorter ones, can you pin down?
Actually, the twelve ones, we got by eighteen. Actually, we got a lot of them, we got a lot in the front. I think we're going to need to see, because you can slide this way, you can just move in. Everyone just, you have a baby, you have a seven, you have a six. All right, everyone here with me, make smiles. Now, I have to do homework, that's a good thing, buddy. Come on, mom and dad, drop out the aisle, don't worry. We're not going anywhere.
Congratulations, dad. All righty.
All righty, all the Babe Ruth parents, come on in. Guys, we have some seats up front here, a couple over there. Looks like we have a couple more parents coming, no, it looks like a couple more coming in. We'll wait for everyone. There's a seat up front here, you can fill them all in. Oh, I see a banner out there. There's seven seats behind us, if somebody wants to take them for the time being. George, why don't you just go take your old seat over there on the left, free one of them. All right, are we good? All righty, so, we have Babe Ruth, and, boy, we got a plethora of teams, and we were all just talking amongst ourselves up here this evening. This is the most teams I think we've ever recognized at one time, and, as I had said earlier, it just goes to show you the, what the youth can do in this community, and not only in sports, in academics, in the arts. I mean, Oviedo is a great place, and the parents, it's your involvement that makes it that way. So, let's start. We have eight U. These young ladies won state, so let me bring their manager up, Leah Byrne. Leah, come on in. Leah, how are you? Congratulations. Let me turn this over to you, you can introduce the girls.
All right, we have Peyton Gibson, she is our second baseman.
All right, this is eight none, right?
This is eight U. Nikki Thompson, she is our third baseman. Ella Vern, she is our shortstop. Miranda Rennie, she's our right center fielder. And Alyssa Gutierrez was our left fielder. And then, we had several other girls who weren't able to make it tonight, and then also, my husband, Nick Byrne, who's an assistant coach.
Coach, just a quick question, and forgive my ignorance, do these girls get pitched to, do they pitch?
Machine pitched.
Machine pitched, all righty, well, great job. Ladies, come on up front here. Hey, look, Cindy and I are taller than somebody. Everybody, come on out, who wants pictures, get in the aisle, don't worry about it. Great job, ladies. Drew, we got all the parents in on the last shift?
All ready, Jeff.
Okay, just make sure, real quick, before I bring in the 10-U team. All righty. Next up, we have the 10-and-under team. Now, these guys won state, went to the World Series, and they were the runner-up in the World Series, so let's give them a big round of applause, and I'll bring in their manager, Tim Slavik. Tim, come on up. Nope, no Tim. Bruce Fennel?
Nope.
I'll keep going down the list. James Jensen?
Yeah, I'm just escorting him, unfortunately, Tim can make it.
Rich, there you are, you're all like, see, you're at the bottom. I would've gotten there eventually. Rich, why don't you introduce your team?
All right. Tell them a little about it first. How they did, what they did. Oh, yeah, they breezed through districts in the area, we went through state, and pretty much without a, one little hiccup, blew through states, and then went to the World Series and did phenomenal. We only lost the one team, Fern Creek in Kentucky, a good team, but we did a heck of a job, the girls did a heck of a job. Tim had them ready to go, Tim did a fantastic job.
Who do you have, when you go?
We have, first up, in the pink pants, Annabella Musamichi, my daughter. We have our catcher extraordinaire, Ava Fones, Ava Fonesbury. Crash, also known as Riley Fennell. One of the best smiles in Oviedo, Kendall Jensen. And last but not least, one of the best hitters on the team, Reagan De Berry.
Great job, ladies. For parents, I always stand up, I follow this team. No reaction, mom, I post many, 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 many posts of you on Facebook all the time.
Give us a little bit of credit. Make smiles.
All righty, so we're going to move on up to the 12-and-under. Again, won state, went to the World Series, second runner-up. Let me bring up their manager here, Steve Miller. Steve, come on up.
No, our pleasure. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the city for taking the time to honor our players and for the recognition for our team's efforts and accomplishments this summer. Our players worked extremely hard to set a goal to accomplish something many years ago, and I'm pleased to say that not only did they accomplish that goal, but they performed at an extremely high level, taking second place in the World Series, so representing our league, our city, and our community extremely well. I want to thank all our parents for their support, my parent coaches, Jason Four and Chet Tulp, for their dedication, devotion to our players, as well as our non-parent coach, Morgan Williams, who's a shining example of what every girl should aspire to be, and an excellent role model that I'm sure all our parents hope their girls emulate. Without further ado, my assistants, Jason Four and Chet Tulp. Unfortunately, Morgan Williams couldn't be here to share in our team's recognition tonight, but our players, McKenna Mahalan,
Awesome job, congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to you. Why don't you come on, line up, we'll get a picture with everybody, okay? Big round of applause for them. I'm sure you know how to do the lineup and the...
I approach, there you go, there you go.
Awesome job. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to you. Why don't you come on, line up? We'll get a picture with everybody, okay? Big round of applause for them. I'm sure you know how to do the lineup and the whatever. One more? That's good, because that's what I have on the list. All righty. Now, I just noticed something down here. I should've announced this a little earlier. It says here that the 6-and-under team also won the states, but that's the furthest that they could advance. So, let's give them a big round of applause, even though they're not here tonight. And again, before I go any further, I have to ask Mr. Kavanaugh, how many of these Winter Park softball has won?
Not a lot.
There you go. Well, for all who don't know, we always have to tease Tom about that, because all they do is they dread playing our girls from Winter Park all the time, because all they do is lose. And it's true. All right, here we go. 14-and-under. These guys won the state. Let me bring in their manager, Steve Ruff. Steve, come on in.
Just a little bit about the team. We went in as the underdogs. Again, we figured we'd go to state, see what we can do out there, and then the girls just stepped up. They played awesome. Again, losing in the championship game and then coming back, winning the second one from a big deficit. I think it was like 12-nothing, came back and beat them the second time in the championship. And again, they just brought it. And again, I couldn't be more proud of the team. And we had two other coaches with us throughout, and that's Dave Norman. And then we had Glenda Linder. Okay, now the players. Peyton Dunkinson? I have my glasses there, but Kendall Ward? And Desiree Ruff? I'd like to give also a shout-out, a couple other people that really helped. Not only the parents stepping out throughout, but we had probably the most unbelievable fundraising team Gina put together for the team. So, again, I want to call it to Gina, and also as far as Dan, for all the photography, all the shots, all the video, everything you did on there. So, you got it. Thank you.
Coach, again, congratulations to everybody. And I just have a quick question. And again, now, being 14-and-under, I guess a lot of these girls are in high school or going to high school. Do they get to play on the high school team and on an All-Star team, or is it one or the other?
Uh, they can do both.
They can do both?
They can do both, yeah.
All right. How many Huskies do we have over here? And how many Lions? Wait, 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 wait. Did I only count one lion out of the whole group?
No.
Oh, man, I'm sorry, sweetie. My daughter's the only Husky in my whole family, so she feels your pain. Come on up front, guys. Let's get a picture. Yeah, Councilwoman Drago in here. I just, you can Photoshop us in.
We had a good summer.
Get up. While everyone's taking their pictures, Councilwoman Drago was a heck of a softball first baseman in her day. She still is, actually. Uh-oh, Drew, you're killing the battery. Drew, I'm assuming you'll have Tracy put all these pictures up tomorrow on the Facebook page? Congratulations, ladies. Great job. All right, let's take a quick five-minute recess. We'll let everybody clear out, and then we'll reconvene. Barbara, you good?
Yeah.
Vivek, you're good? All righty. Reconvene the meeting. It's about 7:13. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes for September 12th. That was a work session, September 19th, regular session, and September 26th, which was a special session. Like to entertain a motion to do so?
Motion second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, next item on the agenda is our public comment portion of the meeting. This is for anything that anybody would like to bring up to us that is not necessarily on our agenda this evening. Barbara, I don't have any written requests. Are there any tonight? No written request. Anybody like to address counsel? Hearing and seeing none, I am going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. This evening, the consent items are item number 7 through 16. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hankin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Hankin?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Drago?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good, sir.
All righty, hearing none. I will call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to item number 17. Just give me a moment here to catch up. It's our first public hearing tonight, and this is ordinance number 1638. It's a zoning map amendment. Mr. Group, would you do us the honor and read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 42.34 acres located on the east side of State Road 426 and approximately 918 feet south of West Mitchell Hammock Road from Seminole County Industrial M1 and Agriculture A1 to City of Oviedo Plan Unit Development PUD, providing for conflict severability codification, as well as the correction of scribners' errors and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This was requested, a zoning map amendment. And when you're discussing those, you look at... First question you have to answer is, is the zoning classification consistent with the property's future land use designation? Then, the other thing that you ask is, are the uses within the proposed zoning classification compatible with the surrounding area? Currently, the zoning classifications of Seminole County M1 and Seminole County A1 are not consistent with the property's commercial and medium-density residential future land use designation. So, this zoning map amendment is needed in order to classify the property with a zoning classification that is consistent with the future land use designations. The proposed plan unit development zoning classification is consistent with the future land use designations. The next question is, are the uses compatible? When you have a plan unit development, the uses are described within a development agreement. And this proposed ordinance does have with it a non-statutory development agreement. The agreement provides for 106,635 square feet of commercial, 182,221 square feet of office, and 70 dwelling units. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Correa and have her go over the development agreement with you. She did the work on it, so I'd like to have her explain the different parts of the development agreement. It establishes the land development regulations for the property. Correa?
And Mr. Cobb, as Dr. Correa makes her way up, just for clarity, this is almost identical to the same exact development proposal that was put forth back in 2007 or '08?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. And one thing to counsel, at first reading, at your last meeting, you had some... You proposed some revisions to the development agreement, which the applicant agreed to at the first reading, and those revisions have been incorporated into the proposed development agreement.
Great, thank you. Dr. Correa?
Good evening. So, as Mr. Cobb said, there was an inconsistency between the future land use and the zoning. The applicant has proposed to rezone the area, and the areas that hatched area in both maps, you see, one is the current future land use, and we have commercial and medium-density residential, and the PUD, which would be now the zoning. Today, the zoning is county industrial and county agricultural. Can you move to the next one? So, because it's a PUD, it's a negotiated development. So, usually, the city gets a desirable outcome. In this case, a mixed-use development, something that we want, and we can be more flexible with some standards because of that. So, we negotiate the standards. Because it's a PUD, they have to propose a development agreement, and they have to show a CDP, a conceptual development plan. And this is the conceptual development plan. They are proposing a mixed-use project. They are subdividing the property into five parcels. Parcel 1 and 2, which are close to 426, they are proposing to have a commercial use. Parcel 3 and 4, which are more to the east, will be... The proposal is of office use. And then they have parcel 5, which is an L-shaped building to the east that they are proposing to have residential use. They also have five tracts of land, two for stormwater, one for recreation, one for the right-of-way, the internal right-of-way, and one for conservation. The streets will be private. The office use is that we will allow, and the development agreement establishes that, it will be everything that is allowed in OC zoning. And the commercial will be C2 zoning. And the residential, they are proposing townhomes and also condos for plus-55 senior living development. The commercial will follow a Florida air ratio of 0.3, the office-floor air ratio of 0.5, and the maximum density for the residential is the total dwelling units per acre, and that gives the maximum of 70 townhomes. And as I said, the streets will be private. So, these show just the standards that we are negotiating and that they proposed. And it shows, for instance, in this case, the landscape. We have in one column what is required by the LDC, the other column what is being proposed in our zoning progress and what the applicant is proposing. So, I will just call some of the differences. For instance, the buffer for... Now, the landscape, for instance, for parcel 5, we don't have anything in our land development code for townhomes. The zoning progress establishes proposing either you have one canopy street per lot or one medium and one... or one medium and one palm tree per lot. They are proposing just to have one medium tree in their lot, and we accepted that. So I'm just calling out the things that we negotiated, that we put in a more flexible way. For the zoning, the landscape between... The buffer between the commercial and the south, where it was the Seminole County property, south of this property, Seminole County is proposing residential development. Our code would request a 30-foot buffer. They are proposing a 20-foot buffer. Initially, and I think in the previous memo that we presented in the first hearing, there was a request from the county for the developer to review that. We called Seminole County, we explained what was the project and the kind of composition that the landscape they are proposing was the same kind of what we would require. And they also... We also learned from Seminole County that they were requesting from their development an additional 10 feet buffer. So in the aggregate, we have the same kind of buffer that we would require. After we explained that to the county, the county said it was okay, and that requirement was dropped. So the next slide. For the height, in the LDC today, we require a maximum of 35 feet in height. The zoning progress, we are proposing 60 feet for the development corridors and 45 for townhomes. They are proposing 45 for townhomes, and they dropped the commercial areas, which are abutting the Seminole County property, which is residential use that's being proposed. They dropped to 50, and they are requesting 75 for parcel 3, which is now where you have the headquarters for the Duda. And they also plan to have one of the uses that they are planning to bring, possibly a hotel. So for that, they would need, you know, more height, and we agree with that. Parking, they are also requiring... Requesting some changes in our code. The code, the zoning, we don't have for townhomes, we don't have parking requirements established in the LDC. But the zoning progress is proposing the number of bedrooms minus one. They are proposing a flat number of two for the parking spaces for the townhomes. So they would be compliant if they would be proposing a three-bedroom townhome, which is in a very possible, right? That's a kind of a common, you know, type of typology for townhomes. They are also requesting a smaller parking space dimensions for the parking spaces. Our code establishes 10 feet by 20. They are proposing that the regular to be nine by 20, and then the compact, instead of nine by 18, they are requesting 8.5 times 16.5, so a different dimension. We were okay with that, too. The signage, our code establishes one sign per parcel, and they are requesting that, but they are also proposing to have one sign in the entrance of 426 for the PUD, so they would have an additional sign. We were also okay with that. And transportation impact fees, they are proposing to merge, actually to bring all the impact fees, the credits that they had in the Viera impact fee agreement, and the credits that they had in the Duda impact fee credit agreement, to be transferred also to this property and to allow... So that we could also give the credit for the existing square footage that they have in the property right now. Actually, the Duda property, the Duda impact fee credit agreement already establishes that, and this is a standard practice, that we... Usually, we would give the credit for the existing square footage that they have.
And those are the credits that are left over from the mall, correct? Essentially?
It's the Viera, right? Yes, the mall developer, yes.
Majority of them.
Yeah. And they have already submitted a new impact fee credit agreement for us to review, so we are doing the review right now. So this will be brought to you as well. The last one. Well, these, I just included these slides because the last time, in the first reading, we discussed the difference between brick and stone and brick and stone veneer, and I think it was not very clear. Brick and stone veneer are real materials, so they are real brick and real stone. The difference that they are not structural, so we can... It's a finishing material, so we can remove the bricks and the walls are still there. And it's different than the precast. The precast was that one that we brought, the whole wall here some time ago. That is not the real material. They just molded to look like brick and stone, and sometimes they do a great job, but what they are proposing is to have just the brick and stone veneer. We changed the agreement, but I just wanted to clarify that, just in case you had questions on that.
Any questions for Dr. Correa?
When did we annex this property?
When did we annex?
I'm just trying to remember.
I don't have the date here.
Was it before we did the previous?
We annexed the property back in the late '90s, early 2000s.
That's why I don't remember when we did it. Right, just curious.
And just another clarification, architectural standards will follow the code in place at the time of the development.
And the townhomes will follow? The townhome code will be... Will all the townhomes follow?
The townhomes will follow. If they would bring right now zoning progress, but we are bringing the architectural standards until the end of the year.
I'm just making sure they'll follow the zoning in progress, exactly.
They will follow the code in... That is, you know, in effect at the time of the development.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the applicants here. Do we have anything to add from the applicant?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is George Veely. I reside at 301 Carolyn Drive. I'm representing a Duda and Sons and the Viera Company this evening, and we appreciate your... The staff's efforts in reviewing our applications and so forth, and we hope you will approve this project this evening. I have with me here this evening Nikki Williams, who is our counsel from the firm Burr &amp; Forman. Aaron Archie is here, representing a Duda and Sons and the Viera Company, and Cass Arons with our Planning Engineering Group, SK Consortium. We've worked for a long time on this project with staff. We're in agreement with the recommendations that are before you this evening. We did prepare a PowerPoint, but we didn't realize it had to be here a week ago, so we could walk you through that, or perhaps the best thing to do would be to just answer any questions that you might have, and we have ample duty here to do that this evening.
Hang on, George, let me see. Anybody have any questions?
No.
I think after 10 years of looking at this, we're pretty up on it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Got all the way up, almost done, and then it got delayed.
Second time's a charm.
You hope?
I hope.
Alrighty. This time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of the meeting. I have no written requests on this item. It is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to address counsel at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I am going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of counsel. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hankin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1638.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt as presented. Councilman Hankin, you do have the floor.
I just have one question. What's the chances of that hotel, George?
I would love to sell a hotel parcel in there, me being a commercial broker. We're marketing it that way. We'll just have to wait and see. You know, those things are market-driven.
Putting the feelers out there.
And we'll certainly do our best to attract a hotel. We think there's a need in the community, just whether or not they're sufficient. They do a lot of in-depth analysis to, you know, calculate.
So you're actively looking at it?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good. Good luck to you on the project.
Councilorman? Deputy Mayor?
No, thanks. Thanks for the... Both of you about the veneer. Like I said, I just want to make sure it wasn't, as you pointed out. Anything but what you showed, that's exactly perfect. Thanks.
Great. And as I've mentioned, I mean, it's the second time through on this, so nothing's really changed from the first time through. Couple of improvements because the code has changed, and you've agreed to meet the new code on the architectural side, so we do appreciate that. I have no further questions. Anything from counsel? Nope, everyone's good? Alrighty, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance 1638. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. There you go, George, second time was a charm. Go build a nice headquarters.
Exactly.
Not that the building hasn't served you well for 50 years, and a little brief history, the Duda Building was the first elevator, I believe, in the city of Oviedo, right? The first one. People used to line up like a Disney ride and go up and down it when you talk to the family about it. Was that George? You were there? Is that what you're saying?
No, the slowest. He said also the slowest elevator.
Well, it is, and it's a scary one. I will agree. I've been in it. But just a little bit of history on that building that is over there. Alrighty, moving along, we're up to item number 18. This is ordinance number 1641, city signature events. Mr. Group, can you read this by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to signature events, amending section 2-291 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, Florida, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for codification, providing for the correction of scribbler's errors, and providing for conflict severability and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. Section 2-291A defines a city signature event as events designated as such by resolution of the city council. The proposed ordinance will expand that definition to mean that a city signature event means a pre-planned annual event co-sponsored by the city by means of an action by the city council with an individual or organization serving as co-sponsor, in which the event is designated as a resolution by the council, has been issued a special event permit, has been held in the city on at least five occasions before being designated as a signature event, has a duration of multiple days, including setup and takedown with predetermined opening and closing, can result in activity impeding or impairing the normal flow of vehicles or pedestrians and pedestrians on a street or street sidewalks or other public facilities which are used primarily for travel or which event will require the partial closing or obstruction of a street sidewalk or public facility, requires the necessity of public safety or traffic control measures not already provided at the proposed event on surrounding area, requires the assistance of one or more city departments before, during, and/or after the event, in other words, city staff working the event, is a quality and scale to target and track non-local visitors to the event area, thereby advancing the tourism and economic development of the city, is held on city property, at a city facility, or within public ride-away, provided, however, that any event which has already been designated as a city signature event by adoption of a resolution by the council prior to the effective date of the ordinance shall not be subject to the requirement, is open to the community at large and to all visitors to the event, is not by invitation only, although such event may be one in which admission is charged. Of course, the grandfathering clause is applied to our current three signature events, which are a great day in the country, Taste of Oviedo, and the Central Florida BBQ, Blowout. Any future signature events will be required to be held on city property or at a city facility. At your first reading, you asked that we also take a look at section 2-291B and the amount of fees that can be waived for a city signature event currently. That is all fees and costs associated with a special event up to $5,000. We added language to this section to say that if the special event requires the use of Center Lake Park for the duration of the event, then the amount will be... To be waived can be $7,000 up to that. That language has already been added to ordinance number 1641. It is recommended that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1641.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion. I have no written request. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address counsel on ordinance number 1641? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of counsel. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hankin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1641.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Hankin?
I just want to say, this is good because it now defines exactly what a city signature event is, because we were wrestling with that for so long, so it's, you know, we tied up all the loose ends, so it's clear now, and this document can be given to anybody who wants to have one. You know, so good job, Brian.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree.
Councilorman?
I agree. Good job.
Councilman Britton?
I agree, but I have one quick question, Brian.
Of course.
Item four has a duration of multiple days, including setup and takedown. What was the reasoning for that?
When you look at the scale of our existing signature events, they take... That's a large scale of an event, and so we looked at it in trying to keep a consistency of the events that it would be a multiple day, and that's why we included setup and takedown. There might be setup on one day, and then the actual event would be the next day, you know, and takedown like that. So that was the thing that we were looking at. We were looking at the type of scale, establishes a scale of the event.
Okay. I don't think it makes much difference. I was just curious, would it?
Great. Anything else, Councilman? Nope, that's good. Alrighty. Well, I think we kind of talked this one through a lot at the first reading, so I like the changes that are in there, and I think everybody did a great job. And as was mentioned, this defines what they are even more so than the definitions we had earlier, and, you know, clearly outlines what is necessary to become a signature event in the city, so. Great job by staff and everybody who was involved. Anything further from counsel? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1641. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our first reading of ordinances, we have ordinance number 1642. Let me just catch up here. And, Mr. Group, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending chapter 34, pensions and retirement, Article 2, relating to the police officer's retirement fund, amending section 34-19 definitions, amending section 34-20 membership, amending section 34-22 finances and fund management, amending establishment and operation of the fund, amending section 34-24 benefit amounts and eligibility, amending section 34-25 pre-retirement death, amending section 34-26 disability, amending section 34-29 optional forms of benefits, amending section 34-34 maximum pension, amending section 34-35 minimum distribution of benefits, amending section 34-38 domestic relations orders, retiree-directed payments, exemption from execution, non-assignability, amending section 34-46 prior police service, amending providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances and conflicts therewith, and providing an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend chapter 34 of the city's Code of Ordinances to bring the city's police pension regulations into compliance with the Internal Revenue Code and its associated regulations, as well as guidance from the Internal Revenue Service. This ordinance was prepared by our pension board attorney. There's been some changes in the IRS code, and so they wanted to get us up to speed. It's recommended that the city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 17th, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to entertain... This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1642 here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers on October 17, 2016 at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
A motion, second. Councilman Hackett, anything?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
No, sir.
Councilwoman? Councilman Britton?
No.
Nope? All righty. All those in favor of the motion to schedule the public hearing for October 17, 6:30 PM, City Hall, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 20, which are Appointment of Committee Members. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to appoint new committee members to the Public Arts Committee. If you remember back in June, you appointed, you adopted Resolution Number 323816 where you appointed seven folks to the Public Arts Committee, one of which being Deputy Mayor Schenk. And we've had three folks drop off the committee for various reasons. The current members have referred two citizens for consideration by city council, Ms. Jennifer Webb and Ms. Jan Hubner-Harman. And the resolution points those two to the Public Arts Committee. They did fill out interest forms. They were provided with your memorandum. It's recommended that the council adopt Resolution Number 3299-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no written request to speak on this item. However, I do always ask, is there anybody who'd like to address city council? Hearing none, close the public comment portion, move on to the pleasure of council.
So Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 3299-16?
Second.
We have a motion, second by Councilwoman Drago. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
These two people are interested in participating, and hopefully we'll get them on board, and over the next few months, month or so, we'll be done.
Good. Councilwoman?
I think you've got a good team there, especially with Council Deputy Mayor on it.
Great.
Bring it around.
Councilman Britton, anything?
Nope. Good.
Councilman Hackett?
Looks good.
Good to me. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 3299-16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 21, which is Resolution Number 3301-16. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a modification of a segment of City Walk Lane on the west side of the right-of-way, the parking and sidewalk design of amended sidewalk order number 457-16. The proposed improvements or the proposed changes are to shift the sidewalk to the east and expand the width of the sidewalk. This will cause the reduction of two on-street parking spaces on the plan. This is to accommodate, one of the things we've been talking about is some sidewalk cafes, and this is to accommodate a restaurant to be located adjacent to the right-of-way and the inclusion of a sidewalk cafe with the restaurant, and it is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3301-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. App can have anything to add?
I do not, you're the answer to the order.
Thank you. I have no request to speak forums on this item, but again, as usual, I always ask, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hackett?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3301-16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Hackett, you have the floor.
Just get me those restaurants, Tom. I'm waiting. Everybody's waiting, so that's good.
Councilwoman?
I'm good with it.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm okay.
Councilman Britton?
I think I'm okay, even though I can't figure out where this change is on the drawing. Is this drawing in our handout, the revised one?
Yes, sir. The proposed change is at the north, what I would say the northwest corner, or actually southwest corner, of the intersection of City Walk Lane and Microburta Way. It'll be the southwest corner. So as you come off Mitchell-Hammond Road, on the left-hand side, if you were headed north toward the park, as you got to the area adjacent, right before you got to Microburta Way, it'd be right in that area there.
Okay. On the north of the road or south of the road?
South. South of Microburta, west of City Walk.
Okay. Oh, okay, now I see it. So it's, okay, good.
Good. All right. Well, I think it's just the evolution of the attraction of the park. Sidewalk cafes are something that have always been envisioned, and opening this parcel up at the cost of two parking spots isn't going to change much of anything, especially two parking spots right at the entranceway.
Correct.
I don't think that's going to be an issue, so I have no problem with this. Any other questions or comments? Nope. Seeing none, we have a motion on the table to adopt Resolution 3301-16. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We have no discussion items, so now we are into reports. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. This Sunday, October the 9th, we will be having our reinstatement of our Oktoberfest celebration. If you remember back years ago, we had an Oktoberfest celebration every year, and we are reinstating it, and it will be this Sunday afternoon from 1:00 to 7:00? 1:00 to 7:00. Also, on October the 14th, movie in the park. The movie is Hocus Pocus. Will be at Center Lake Park. It's Friday night. October 28th and 29th is the annual Carnival of Screens at Riverside Park, and I believe Saturday is the Teeny Weenie Halloweeny, right? That'll be held on October the 31st at Riverside Park. And then on November the 12th, its first year at Center Lake Park is a great day in the country from 9:00 to 4:00. So I wanted to catch council up. We've got a busy, busy October, and looking forward to November as well.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir.
All righty. Mr. Group, do you have anything for us to say?
Nothing for the good of the order, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Thank you, sir. First up, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. You've said a lot of the things that have gone on in my backyard for me, so I had a lot of them listed up there. There's also a...
He didn't say you were invited.
That's true. There's a business after hours at David Weekly this Thursday night. I think we've all got invited to that with the chamber and ribbon cutting. And Chamber Monthly Luncheon is this week. The Chamber Luncheon is this week also.
The Chamber Luncheon?
At David Weekly. They're doing a open house and...
For their new model over at Oviedo on the park. It's from, with the chamber, I think it was like 5:30 and 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30, yeah.
Typical chamber.
I think we all got an email. That's it.
Great. All righty, who's up next? Councilmember Hackett?
I just have one item. Mr. Cobb, if you can, I know over the weekend you sent us an email about the public campaign for the bond referendum for the police station, which I responded at a Donald Trump hour at 3:00 AM, which, you know, I hope you told your consultants, I was just taken back by it a little bit, but that's all well and good. They're doing a great job, but just can you give us an update, because I know you had a meeting with them when you put it all together. I know you just had it this afternoon, but send out an update, what we're doing, and I'll just say, you know, the time's urgent now. You know, the election's November 8th. We need that building. That is sorely needed, so, you know, that's really, you know, all of you who got my email was just basically a sense of urgency, let's get this in everybody's mailbox and tell them why it's important, because it is, and let's get it done. You know, we haven't failed on any of these yet, and this is a big one, you know? So if you can just send us an update when you can with your notes, whatever you had from your meeting today would be great, where we're going and what we're doing, and it's good. And tell your consultants, they're fine, everything's good, just, you just got to get going, you know? That's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
We've only ever had one fail. Only one. So Cultural Arts Center.
The Cultural Arts Center.
And the infamous words from this day is, give me my Cultural Arts Center or give me death.
Death happened.
Both came true. All righty. Anything else?
And isn't it funny, we got a cultural center now?
Yeah. Not to the scale that was being...
Right.
Proposed.
Yeah.
The scale that was being proposed would have been...
Right.
I guess winter parkish.
Creality and a whole different village of...
A whole village of things. All righty, moving on. Councilmember Drago?
Well, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you that sent your prayers and condolences and cards and flowers to myself and my family. It was very nice, and I really felt the support and the love that came from this family in the city of Oviedo, so I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Britton?
A few things. I'm going to start with some good news. I got an email from a friend that I'm acquainted with, who is not always complimentary about what goes on in the city. His name is Paul Savage, and he sent us an email.
Listen, he's not even a citizen.
Exactly. He's a citizen of the city. He's just not a citizen of the United States. But he sent a very nice email about some help he got from three employees, Tabitha Sanchez, Luanne Martin, and Teresa Mendez. Apparently, he had some issues with the new utility billing system and called up and worked with them. He was very, very impressed with their abilities and their willingness to try new things and fix the problem, so if you could pass that along, tell them good job, and if you made Mr. Savage happy, you definitely did a good job. We've got a Calno meeting on Wednesday night at the school...
That's still going on, Calno? We haven't killed Calno yet?
If you let me finish the sentence, if you want to say goodbye to DeeDee Schaffner, I think she'll be in attendance and probably one of the last chances you'll get to see her.
Where's Calno this?
It's at the school board.
Which week? This week?
It's Wednesday, yeah. It's Wednesday. National Night Out is tomorrow, right, Chief? Okay, so if you're out in the neighborhood, go see your neighbors and turn your lights on. And finally, I had an issue, I want to just say very briefly, that I observed an issue at the soccer fields on Friday night that really concerned me. Brian, I know I've spoken to you, but I really want to emphasize that we have lightning systems out there to alert the players for a reason, and if they're not going to adhere to them, then we've got to, we've got to make some changes. For background, I was at the soccer fields, the lightning alarms went off, and there was no city employee out there to enforce the alarm, and the soccer games went on with lightning going on. And then when we tried to close the fields, they refused to leave the field. Sounds like American Pie. So in the future, I'd like to make sure we've got someone with authority out there that can enforce that, and it's not, not something I take very lightly. So let's, let's be safe. We don't spend money on that stuff for nothing, so. Brian, I'll leave it up to you and Drew. That's it.
All righty, great. Mr. Mayor?
Sure, of course. Just want to let everybody know, I'm sure everybody's been watching, but Chief White is, is actually, he really, I think, was a weatherman in his former life, because he actually does it better than most of the people we watch on TV. He really does, but he did send us out an email about 20 minutes ago that we are now in the cone of this hurricane, and said tomorrow morning will be where we really want to watch, but it jogged over 100 miles to the west, so everybody keep an eye on that. Let's hope it steers away, but it was coming nowhere near us. Now it's, we're in the cone, so Chief, if you're out there watching, good job. Thanks for keeping us updated.
Are you going to be on 24/7 Hurricane Watch Force?
Yes.
All righty. That's what we like to hear. Just so everybody knows, while you're all sleeping, this man's up working and watching the city 24/7, so. And that is true, because he works on the overnight, but you can send him an email at 2:00 o'clock. You can call his house at 3:30, he'll answer, so. All righty. My report's going to be brief. The Rotary had their movie event a week or two ago, and again, as usual, an excellent event put on by them. Seemed to be very well attended. It's so hard to tell because that theater just gets, seems to be all filled up, but hopefully they had a great fundraiser. I know, I think it's their biggest one of the year. Hagerty Homecoming Parade was this past Friday, and that was a lot of fun. The kids were out there. I mean, that, that's actually pretty cool, Hagerty, because they bus in the elementary kids who are actually going to go to Hagerty, so they have the elementary school kids lining the homecoming parade route and gets them excited about becoming a Husky. Drew, I haven't seen anything come across from you on Oviedo's parade, though. Do you know what it is?
Working on it. I think it's the November 11th or...
Oh, late this year.
I'm waiting for them to come that night. I've contacted them. Is that the message last week for them to call?
Okay. Oh, I didn't realize it was in November.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All righty, great. So you're on it. And that's all I've got for this evening. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
One more thing, just to remind everybody, you know, inside the consent agenda was the website design.
Yeah, I saw that.
You know, somebody sees that, you know, so over the next, I'm going to say year, but we should start seeing, you know, long-term, we'll start seeing the website redesigned. That's a great thing to help people find information. It'll add a great amount of capabilities to the city, so that's something to look forward to.
And that's a great point, Deputy Mayor, because also included in that design is the mobile app.
Exactly.
For the citizens. Citizens are going to be able to take the mobile app, pay your water bill, do just about anything online that you could do on the website. Also, a neat feature of the app is you're going to be able, if you see something, you'll be able to take a picture of it, send that picture directly into City Hall, and by GPS coordinates, City Hall will know where the issue is. So if it's a street sign, a pothole, broken sidewalk, it doesn't matter, you can snap the picture, and it'll come right in to us. So that is really bringing us forward in leaps and bounds compared to the old, what is that language that website's written in?
Drupal.
Drupal?
Drupal.
Drupal. Well, I don't know much about them, but anybody you tell that you have a Drupal website, they just smile and giggle at you, so that's all coming into the 21st century. Also, as part of that, I believe, Brian, one of the modules that they have that you're looking at is the update to our agenda software.